Okay, ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen, y'all please take your seats. It's nine o'clock. Y'all need to sign this for the light bin. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. I want to call this meeting to order. Look at that sea of blue out here. It's what?
Before I begin, I just want to say this. You all have no idea what joy this gives me in being able to speak to my God in front of all of His children. I thank you all for that. Pray with me, please. Father, in Jesus' name, we give thanks for our great country, state, and county governments, and those who have been placed in authority over us. We pray and intercede for these men and women that the Spirit of the Lord rests upon them. I believe that skillful and godly wisdom has entered into their hearts, and knowledge is pleasant to them. Discretion watches over them. Understanding keeps and delivers them from the way of evil, and from evil men and evil women. Lord, we thank you for surrounding our county judge and commissioners with people who make their hearts and ears attentive to godly counsel and do what is right in your sight. I believe you cause them to be people of integrity, who are obedient concerning us, so we may lead quiet and peaceable lives in all godliness and honesty. Your Word declares that blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. We receive that blessing, Father. You are refuge and our stronghold in times of trouble, so we speak aloud that your people live safely in Hood County and in Texas, and that we prosper abundantly. We are more than conquerors through Jesus Christ. Your Word says, "The heart of the king is in the hand of the Lord," and that you turn it whichever way you desire. We believe the hearts of Judge Massengill and the commissioners are in your hands, so their decisions are divinely directed by you. We give thanks to you that the good news of the gospel is published in Hood County, the state of Texas, and these great United States. The Word of God prevails and grows mightily in the hearts and lives of our citizens, and we give thanks for this land and the leaders you have given to us in Jesus' name and Jesus' is Lord over the United States of America. Amen and amen.
Please go on and say, "I am the great and powerful Lord of the United States of America and of the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Under the Texas flag.
Under the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual.
I want to remind everybody who is in the court, if you have the permission to speak on the microphone or on the other items, you must still allow the court's participation or commit to your duty of the government clerk, and if you can't, you're not allowed to participate in this meeting. If you have the authorization for this meeting, then you will not be able to speak. Anyway, so the first, our next items are special presentations, and we got a bunch of computers today, but I wish to make one that is going to be a very specific one to the services of Hood County, an important contribution. And this is to a college, Ronald Rohn, for his loan of the fabulous oil painting of General John Bell Hood that's on one campus, that's only come in the historic courthouse on Square. I already talked to the historic commission. They have looked at it. They have approved this, and they have, they think it's as fabulous as I do. So I want to come down here and let you people be, Mr. Rohn, because I've made it one time before, and it's lovely, it's white here. They've been married for quite at least twenty years or so. Now, the other reason why. This is Ronald, if you have the permission, please. I'll tell you, these two people here, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stand like this so we can take some pictures over here. Let's leave right there. Take more pictures of anybody else. This guy is a real Renaissance guy. He's an engineer. He does everything else. This is his wife and his...
It's Roberta.
Roberta.
Sixty-four years.
Only sixty-four years.
Oh, my goodness.
You know, he started working as the engineer on DFW Air Force, and I said, "Well, the first pilot that landed there are their wives." Thank you all, DFWN has been around here. But what I want to do, and that this plaque was designed by and paid for by Roberta. She gets full credit for this, and it says, "C. Ronald Rohn, born 1934."
Right. It's gonna be eighty-nine if you get it right.
And he's still doing work, I'm telling you. His company, he did two companies. One is in six states, the other's in two states, still bears his name. He's done so much good, so I want to say most of that when we unveil the painting that will be hung in the historic courthouse. And ladies and gentlemen, it's a fabulous oil painting on characters of General John Bell Hood. The first time when I saw it, I was just struck by the way it captured the sadness in his eyes. Like we were talking, he lost an arm, a leg.
They had to track him on his saddle to finish up the war, there were only a hundred and forty thousand guys coming at him.
Strapped and saddled, and one arm, and he was still doing it. This guy's a fabulous guy. Anyway, it says, "All owned by C. Ronald and Roberta Rohn." I'll tell you one thing, this guy here, Ronnie Rohn, will not let you mention anything about him without giving credit to Roberta.
Good for him.
I mean, that's for sure.
We worked as a team for holy years in a company, and when I did start the painting, he said, "You need to, you're gonna retire someday, so anyway, why don't you, I'd like to give you some guidance." Because I'm not, I'm a TCU graduate in art, so I said, "I'm in here, I don't have a draw." So anyway, what happened when I started our painting, I painted it because I wanted to get the expression of a person's eyes, the person's eyes. I went into the picture, the photograph that I painted from it was after the Civil War, and you can imagine, the guy had no piece of his own farm, and yet, I heard he took him on and lost his leg, and then being without pensions to war, and he stopped using his own, just stopped and had to call a clinic. But anyway, I kept it there in my pen, because she told me I did it. So anyway, I was lucky enough to meet the judge, and he approved that painting, so I'm delighted to give this all along. The reason for that all along is my son, Roberta, tapped me and shut up. He said, "In future, you cannot tell." Judge Massengill, my friend, said, "But ladies, another judge, a law clerk here that's southern to you." So I said, "Well, I'll paint it with Kevin too." So I appreciate the judge, and I'm looking forward to that case, and that, that, that is a thank for for Hood County.
That's what he did. He sat down, and he reminded me of taking this painting, are you? And I said, "No, this is like they're not taking General Granby either on the bill." And so, he said, "How can we work this out?" He said, "What if I give the painting to you?" And I said, "No, how about this? You just take it and it's all along. You've got a son, y'all have grandsons, so if anybody ever says that the mood changes even worse, and they want to start taking stuff, you just go back up there." And that's why I'm making this announcement on the record, that it's all along. You could get the petrol on, so it's all along, it's just a little more. That's right, that's right. So you want to take a picture of this? Roberta, do you want to? Yeah, since you designed it and made it. But, well, thank you.
Thank you.
And let me say this, is that this will be a big announcement when we do the unveiling of the courthouse, so that we have plenty of announcement. Y'all want to see this? It's hidden in my office right now. So, thank you very much. And thank you, you've done a lot. You don't understand, but behind every great man is a great woman, so I think this is a perfect example. So thank you.
You're welcome.
And now, Commissioner Andrews is going to have a very special presentation to make, and we've all signed that. We'll stand back a little bit.
This way, so I can stand back here and say what I need to say. Ladies, if you would come on up. Well, what a, what a privilege it is today, and as a proud Lipanian, wearing the Lipan blue and gold here. Our Lady Indians are 2A state champions again. So come on up and face out that way. Here, let's stand in front of that podium, so it's not in the picture. All right, I'm gonna have the mic here, so I can read this proclamation, so. Says, "A proclamation honoring the Lipan Lady Indians' UIL 2A State Girls Basketball Championship. Whereas the exceptional team chemistry, hard work, determination, sportsmanship, and talent of the 2023 Lipan Lady Indians Basketball Team empowered these student athletes to earn the state championship title. And whereas on Saturday, March 6th of 2023, the Lipan Lady Indians won the 2023 state title by defeating the Groover Lady Greyhounds 53 to 48 at Alamo Dome in San Antonio, Texas. And whereas the Lady Indians have won three state championships in the last seven years with a total of ten state tournament appearances. And whereas winning the 2023 UIL 2A State Girls Basketball Championship brought honor to Lipan High School, the city of Lipan, and Hood County on local, state, and national level. Now therefore, I, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner for Precinct 1, along with all the members of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Lipan High School and the Lipan Lady Indians Basketball Team on its outstanding accomplishment. And further, I urge all the citizens of Hood County to join me in recognizing all members of the team, their coaches and parents, in celebrating this team's achievement, and wish the members continued success. Adopted this day, 28th of March, 2023." So. Good job, ladies.
Don't y'all want to give one with the superintendent of the students? He get any credit than the coach.
You can come now.
Okay, now we're gonna try. Gentlemen, if you'll come up too. No, let's go ahead and bring them up, and then we'll...
They're doing us all to...
Yeah, that would probably be a better one.
You want to read this?
Well, I'll read it. First, so we can... A little closer.
Did anybody have their house?
I wasn't looking.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Oh, man. I'm already sorry. My bad.
Good to see you again. Back, congratulations. Thank you. All right. Also, the boys won the state championship at the same year. Now...
That's been done for sixteen years in the state of Texas.
Yeah, that is, that has not been done for sixteen years that one school has won both championships in the state of Texas. So for the first time in sixteen years, both boys and girls won, won the 2A championships. And it's so proud of these guys, the work and the, everything that they've done there. So now I'd like to read the proclamation honoring the Lipan Indians' UIL 2A State Boys Basketball Championship. Whereas the hard work, determination, exceptional team chemistry, and talent of the 2023 Lipan Indians Basketball Team enabled these student athletes to a state championship title. And whereas on Saturday, March 13th, 2023, the Lipan Indians won the 2023 state title by defeating LaRue LaPointe Flyers 50 to 46 at the Alamo Dome in San Antonio, Texas. And whereas the Lipan Indians have won five state championships, and men in the state tournament fourteen, well, fourteen state tournament appearances, including five of the last seven. Whereas winning the 2023 UIL 2A State Boys Basketball Championship brought honor to Lipan High School, the city of Lipan, and Hood County on a local, state, and national level. Now therefore, I, Kevin Andrews, Commissioner for Precinct 1, along with all the members of the Commissioners Court of Hood County, Texas, do hereby recognize and heartily congratulate Lipan High School and the Lipan Indians Basketball Team on its outstanding accomplishment. And further, I urge all citizens of Hood County to join me in recognizing all members of the team, their coaches and parents, in celebrating the team's achievement, and wish the members continued success. Adopted this 28th day of March, 2023. So, congratulations. All right, scoot in a little bit. Everybody can kind of scoot in a little here. You good, Dee? Okay. All right, congratulations, thank you, guys. Congratulations, thank you, y'all, for coming.
Thank you, sir, appreciate you.
Good job. Excellent job.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We're gonna borrow him again. Y'all want to stand in our picture? Y'all want to stand in our picture?
You might want to scoot in a little bit, so, all right.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all again.
A couple. You know, I wanted to make, make this point. This is Athletic Director Branson's first year as the athletic director, and I think she set a pretty hard, a high bar that she's gonna have to live up to here, so. Yeah, yeah, and I would like to say that too, to the staff, the coaches, teachers, the community. It's great to come out and win basketball games. It's great to put the skins on the wall, for sure. But I think the most important thing is, is raising good human beings, and there are some great kids sitting over there. So, you know, I would like to applaud the, just the community of that. And thank you, guys, for coming out today. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the service awards here. Ms. Welber.
Good morning. Our five-year service award recipient is unable to attend. He's actually attending the Law Enforcement Academy, so he was unable to attend, so we'll accommodate him once he graduates. The next one is Andrea Ferguson, our tax assessor-collector with ten years. Judge, would you like to come down and present her their award?
I made it.
I want you to know that this lady does a great job here. Don't have any complaints by there. Come here, and let's turn around so we can do this. Here, presented to Andrea Ferguson, and recognized for ten years of dedicated service to Hood County. This is signed by myself and all the commissioners.
Thank you.
Well, well deserved, and also, this diamond ring here, no. No, but it's a beautiful pin here, okay?
I'll put it with the five.
Better. Yeah, there you go, you could do it that.
Thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you very much.
Judge, commissioners, William Lewis has been with us for ten years, a very important part of our, our department, and we cherish that he's with us.
William? Does that conclude all the?
Yes, sir.
Service awards? Okay, now we get down to citizens' comments at large, and we have six speakers at this time. Okay, the first speaker is Elizabeth Mercer. Ms. Mercer.
Pull it down there, so you... No, I'm short, it's a pain. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I appreciate your time. I just want to talk about the Upper Trinity Groundwater Board. I am deeply concerned about the gentleman, Mr. Lusk, who has been reappointed because for some reason, we decided to have a second vote, which by the way, sets a very interesting precedent for people like me. I would like to see the original appointee go on there because his bailiwick and his specialty isn't groundwater. I'm concerned because we have real water issues across the state of Texas, and if you're following the ledge, you'll be aware of the fact that they just created a brand-new fund, not just to build more water infrastructure, but to put aside a certain amount of money to buy water in case we all start running out. I'm not anti-development. I came here thirty-seven years ago as a newcomer, and I love this area. But water is finite, and so if we're going to build out and develop as we should, we need to be thoughtful, we need to be careful, and we need to make very certain that this finite resource has the very best people available monitoring it and monitoring our growth. Because frankly, I don't want to buy water in Lipan, and I don't want my well to go dry. Now, we drilled down to the second, to the first Trinity, and we've got another well on the place and the second. But both of those portions of the aquifer are under duress, haven't completely recovered from the 2011 drought. Most of us understand and know that the Trinity aquifer, what is it, about forty-four thousand? It's, it extends from upper Oklahoma down into South Texas, but it doesn't replenish like the Edwards Aquifer does. And the gentleman you have right now on the Upper Trinity Board, the optics of it is I can't know his heart, and I don't know yours, so I'm not making an accusation here. But what I'm saying is, the optics of it is that you removed a man who is thoughtful and careful about growth, and you replaced him with someone who is very developer-friendly. That may not be the case, gentlemen and lady, I don't know, but that is how it looks. And because water is something I pay a lot of attention to, and I care about deeply, I am asking you to reconsider and put the original nominee back on the board. I know no one has been appointed yet. I'm gonna be at that April 20th meeting, you can bet. The other thing is, if you take the time to actually start researching this issue, then you will find in the lower South Texas area, they have gotten together with ranchers, who, as we all know, are really not terrible liberals, and they have gotten together and joined with studies. That's how we know that in places in South Texas, it's like the second, the first and second levels are fifteen to twenty feet low. That should alarm all of us. And since it's ranchers working with the government and not nassio-liberals, maybe we can say that this is a real problem, and it's one that affects everyone. So I'm asking you to reconsider, Mr. Lusk. I'm asking you to put Mr. Massey on that board, because he has a proven record of knowing what he's doing, number one, and number two, he's thoughtful about how he wants to build out. Something as simple as saying five acres as opposed to two acres can be huge if you live out, and I do. If you're on a well, and I am, and I have been for thirty-seven years in various parts of this area. So I am asking you to put your politics aside, because I have absolutely no clue how you could slap all of the people in the face who voted for the previous board and say they're unimportant, and only the people who voted for this board are important. And again, that may not be what you've done, I don't know your hearts, but that's the optics of it, and it's insulting. So that's just my particular opinion on this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right. Okay, the next is Tim Harris.
Good morning. We have a vote handed out for the four commissioners. My name's Tim Harris. I live at the Pecan Plantation, and I'm really here to talk about the Compute North data mining facility that's next to Wolf Hollow Power Plant. And the problem is, it's a constant humming and noise of the fans, and it's 24/7 if the wind's blowing out of the normal direction. I have to sleep with a sound machine in my nightstand next to my head just to kind of drown out the noise. But if you look at this map and you see Wolf Hollow and you see where the Compute North data mining facility is, if you drive around to Pecan, it's about seven or eight miles, but it's really hilltop to hilltop as a crow flies. It's only about three or four miles. So, all of those fans generate that noise, and it travels on that wind, and there's no natural sound deflection. If we had a little hill or something between us, it would kind of dampen that. But that noise travels straight to us. When you look at Compute North online, you do a little bit of research, their facility is scalable up to 600 megawatts. Well, right now, it's only at 300 megawatts. So, they can grow twice as large, which means twice the decibels. So, one of the, I just don't want to bring you an issue, but I have a possible solution, too, is item number C. Because of that wind and because it's hilltop to hilltop, we need some type of a sound barrier or a deflector. Probably not as elaborate as you see on a highway next to a residential community. They have those precast concrete things. But today, they only have a chain-linked fence, a six-foot chain-linked fence. And one of the families in Pecan has already taken them to a court, and they got a judgment that forced them to put that sound barrier. It's like a sound barrier on a tennis court, the cloth. And this one, you can really see through it, so... And the other thing, the other solution, one, is a sound barrier. Solution two is, don't allow them to double in size. They're at 300 megawatts. We don't want them to go to 600 megawatts because it's twice the fans. And on the bottom, there's a penal code, 42, that says if it's, if the noise is above 85 decibels, then we have recourse to take on them. Right now, in my front yard, it's 55 to 60 decibels. And like I say, every time I lay down, I gotta turn my sound machine on to kind of dampen the noise. If you turn to the next page, you'll see what these containers look like. And I'm guessing they have about 150 containers now. And every container has 14 fans in each container because the fans cool the computers that are doing the data mining, trying to create blockchains, things like that. So, and on this picture below it, I was on the road, and you can see the chain-linked fence, and on the left, you can see that material that's on the fence. But you'll notice 80% of the containers, the land that they built it on, kind of rolls up and rolls down, right? Well, if you look at that picture, 80% of them are above the top of the chain-linked fence. So, the, I think the fence and the cloth was put up just because of the previous lawsuit. Visually, it looks like they're trying to be compliant. But in reality, it's, the picture is worth a thousand words. And then below, I just thought, you know, you kind of see the size of the fans compared to a person. So, they're very large. And then finally, the timeline at the bottom. They, Compute North broke ground in April 2022. Five or six months later, they filed for bankruptcy. They were up six months. And then in November of the same year, they sold to Generate Capital. And that's the company that helped them acquire the $385 billion. So, anyway, my concern is, don't let them expand. We need some kind of a wind barrier. And on next door, on Pecan, there's already 18 different people that have issued. So, I just want to make you aware, it's a little bit of a growing issue. And it depends geographically where you are. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, next is Tina Brown.
Good morning. First, I'd like to say I agree with both of these speakers. Our groundwater is very important, and Bitcoin seems to go with the solar given abatements and that kind of thing. But I'm here to talk again about the specialists that you were allowed to be hired for Katie Lang's office. It's now the end of March, and still, none of you have put anything on the agenda to discuss why she was even needed. Obviously, she was qualified to do the job before she got the promotion. So, why have y'all allowed that to happen? It seems to be a great waste of taxpayer dollars. She is being paid more than any other clerk in this county to do the same job. That is not fair or right. And I would like someone to put this on the agenda to discuss it and see if something can be done to fix the problem. Also, at the last meeting, I'm pretty sure this court accepted the county clerk's audit, and I assumed her financial reports would be available from October through February, but still, they're not on the agenda today. So, why is her office allowed to be so far behind compared to any other department in this county? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The next is Katie Schof.
Good morning. I'm Kathy Shep, and my husband, Vic, and I have been living in Pecan Plantation for the past 23 years. We're Pecan lovers, we're Granbury lovers, and we're Hood County lovers. I'm here this morning to represent Pecan Women's Club. We are a not-for-profit organization. We were founded in 1978. We promote fellowship in Pecan Plantation. We support the Pecan community and Hood County charities. And we also provide scholarship opportunities for graduating Hood County young women, which we will be announcing winners at our next meeting. So, that's just part of what we do for Pecan and for Granbury and for Hood County. An example is this Saturday, April the 1st. We will be having a drive-through food pantry for Rancho Brazos. We make this a community event every year. With school coming to an end and school lunch programs ending, we have a lot of children in Hood County that are desperate for lunch and breakfast. We just want to promote our drive-through pantry, but also promote Granbury and Hood County as in large to drop off your donations to Rancho Brazos at any time. With school ending, they're gonna be serving over 200 breakfast and lunch meals a day. They do a lot of work for us. They do a lot of good for the children. And let's just all remember, this is for the children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Sharon Sheelander.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners. The reason I asked to speak today was because last meeting, I kind of spoke out from the audience, and I wanted to clarify why I spoke out from the audience. It wasn't because Mike Davis was allowed to speak. It was because he's allowed to continually, meeting after meeting after meeting, come up here and rant and demean Commissioner Eagle. I think the people in the audience are getting tired of that because it breaks the rule, the rule that you, Judge, set about people coming up here and really talking about or addressing any one commissioner. They should be talking about county issues and that, and that's what they should stay with. So, just wanted to come up and clarify why I spoke out from the audience and let you know that many of us are frustrated that this continues. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Harold Granik.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. I'll be brief. First, I agree with my concerns with Ms. Tina Brown's that I would like to see a financial report from the county clerk's office, which has been absent for a long time. Secondly, I hope that there can be some compromise on the recommendations for the groundwater board before, because I noticed there's been multiple meetings that they've not had a quorum. And if this continues, if members of the board die off, we may not have a groundwater board anymore because we'll never have a quorum. And thirdly, I want to direct to one commissioner since he represents both the light pan men's and women's prodigious achievements. I hope he will have a workshop to show that he qualifies by either showing he can dunk the basketball or make a half-court shot. Thank you.
Trouble on that one.
Okay, that concludes the Citizens' Comments at Large. And now, we have the Citizens' Comments pertaining to Agenda items. And the first, well, we have none on the first one. So, under miscellaneous seven, number one is to discuss and take appropriate action to sign the City of Granbury's event application on request of Granbury Wine Walk related to vendor parking around the historic courthouse during the wine walk on Friday, April 28th, and Saturday, April 29th, 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., contingent upon proof of insurance. I have received the application and the proof of insurance. And if anybody, is there any discussion about the wine walk? I think it's a very important event for Granbury and the city and the county of Hood, and that it brings a lot of people here to Hood County. I guess that's good and bad news on 377. So, you locals, stay off of 377. You know that during that wine walk, don't you? So, does anybody have any comment or question concerning the application for the wine walk event? If not
Did Mr. Tadig Leone sign up to speak?
What?
Did you sign up to speak, Mr. Tadig Leone?
No, not on
Okay, I thought he did.
He's here.
Okay.
I recognize him, but you signed everything, you got the insurance and everything, and I move that we approve the application for the wine walk event. By here or second?
Second.
Okay, second by Nanette Samuelson. Okay, so, any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the wine walk application and the hours and the historic parking, as stated? All those say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Thank you, Mr. Chuck Taglioni here. Have another successful event, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number two. Receive and discuss update from IT Department on the following. Tyler implementation status, go-live date, JP and Purdue interface, website conversion with important milestones, camera installation, any near-term future purchases. All right, is that broad enough for you there, Mr. Drew Whitaker?
It is. Yes, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen. Commissioner Samuelson wanted me to, of course, give another update, status update, on how we've progressed. And I guess I can start with the Tyler implementation and the status go-live. We are still currently making our way towards go-live. However, go-live was pushed back a month due to the availability with certain offices because it looks like they were already scheduled for vacation on, in different offices. So, we were not going to be able to make the go-live. So, that was discussed during the last governance meeting that Commissioner Wilson and Commissioner Samuelson, Samson, bah, bah, sorry, was available at. But like I said, we are still progressing towards go-live. Everything's fine. We're about to come up on data review number two. And so, so far, so good. Moving on to the, I guess, JP and Purdue interfaces. We are currently about to go live with those interfaces for the JPs. There is a go-live no later than Friday. So, we are currently just waiting for them to go live for that. So, as you'll see on the monthly reports down there, the last three JPs for the past few months, they haven't had a monthly report. So, we kept working. Ashley in my department was working with Ms. Hicks, which is in the auditor's office, to get that, and they were off by one each time. And so, they kept going back to Tyler. Tyler fixed the issue, sent it back. We tested it. There's still some numbers that were off, sent it back. So, point being said, everything should be live Friday on that interface. The website conversion, thanks to Ms. Samuelson, we got the last piece we needed from the Sheriff's Department yesterday afternoon. So, we are progressing with our website development. I mean, really, that's about it, unless you have any questions about that. As far as the cameras, one of them is already mounted up there, as you can see. We, this afternoon, after Commissioners' Court, AVI will be down to mount up the second camera for livestream. So, we'll actually get a view of the podium, which that camera is looking at. And then we'll get another camera up there, and that will face the court. So, everyone will finally be able to see the whole courtroom. Like I said, that, of course, will be this afternoon. So, for next Commissioners' Court, all of this should go live and good to go, and we should be green. And there's really no near-term future purchases that we can think of right now. But if anyone has any questions, you can always feel free to reach out to me at any time.
On the website, the go-live date now is scheduled for around August?
No, we're still pushing for June. So, after we got the Sheriff's Office update, we still pushed, and they still think they can meet June. So, as far as I'm concerned, we're still green for June.
And on the Tyler, just to be clear, the constables were scheduled for March, and now they're August. And that had to do
Yes.
So, that had to do with
Everyone got pushed back, everyone got pushed back due to availability. If there is, Tyler told us, because I guess my understanding from Tyler is they, again, gave us the resources to do this, but they now have pushed resources elsewhere. So, we are currently waiting on Tyler.
Right, so the constables were ready, but Tyler could not reschedule their resources until August.
Yep.
And then, so, the Treasurer's Department, I don't know if Leanne wants to speak to this or not, but I think there's some inability because she's, has to do her, her job is very, deals with very confidential information. So, it's not like she can just pull someone in off the street to help her. So, she's working on
Absolutely, and that's my understanding as well that there was a bit of time that she had that extra, that third person, essentially. And of course, they were let go or dropped off the face of the earth. And so, of course, she was not able to, of course, do the conversion and still run the office at the same time. But now that we actually have someone that has been with her for quite a while, very shortly, she's gonna be trying to shift everything. Okay.
Three weeks, three weeks.
I mean, the last thing was three days.
I guess the staffing bandwidth issue that the Treasurer's Department was having looks like it's getting, could be cleared up.
Yes, and so, she's gonna, my understanding is, she will be shifting everything over to them to see if they can handle everything without her so she can start focusing in on getting time and attendance done.
Thank you, and thank you for getting the cameras up.
Absolutely.
Any questions? We do have one speaker. Any other comment before I call the Speaker, David Ferris?
Good morning. My name is David Ferris, 3500 Abe's Landing, Granbury. I think most of you know me. I've talked to several of you individually. I just wanted to ask a few questions. I was hoping a little bit more information on the status update of this. I'm also a little concerned that a lot of I'm also a little concerned that a lot of people here in the audience don't really have any idea why there were issues with this Tyler conversion project. And I've spoken detail with at least four of you. My biggest concern is the real problem with this Tyler implementation is because there were severe known vulnerabilities in this software product. Many criminal litigation cases of known issues with this product before this contract was even signed. As of about three months ago, I know of three major vulnerabilities in this software, and as of about three months ago, I know of at least eight known issues with two of those vulnerabilities, and that showed up in the Hood County data as it was being tested. There were resource issues which were impossible to meet by the group. I have very specific reasons why I think those were there, which I won't go into in this timeframe because I don't have the time to explain why that was done, and I think it was a real problem in the way the contract was written. The whole thing goes back to software management processes that have evolved over the last 40 years. And I did play around to some a little bit with something like this, especially since I'm not directly involved. I don't know everything, but again, part of my background is a master's in the business statistics, evaluating risks of software development, things of that nature. And from what I see, unless there is verified proof that these vulnerabilities have not been, or that have been corrected, I see you come up with a range of probabilities based on worst-case scenario to best-case scenario. I see no possibility statistically that Hood County could avoid major litigation issues in the future unless things have changed drastically in the last three months, and I see no indication of that. Just as playing around with the numbers, you may have it, on a best case, you may have a 10%, 15% chance of avoiding major litigation. In a worst-case scenario, I come up with about an 80% chance of major litigation issues, because those eight cases that I saw were only in a small subset of the data at the time. And there are two cases where those would have happened. The data migration, or is it in another part of the software, which every migration process I've ever done uses the same process to create a new record as importing an old one? If it's in that area, you'll have an ongoing forever, small probability risk, maybe 1%, that any new record you add will again generate new vulnerabilities. All right? So my concern is if you haven't gotten verifiable proof that those cannot happen by any methodology of software management development best practices in the last 40 years, you really got to consider if you can go forward with this project until those are addressed. And I'll just ask one question. Did you take the opportunity to look up the multimillion-dollar case that I was hired by that one law firm many years ago as an expert witness investigating those software vulnerabilities when we met in your office? I was just curious if you did. Okay, but I would be happy to discuss this at a special meeting, and I'd invite everybody to show up. You can ask me questions. I've had 45...
Well, I was gonna ask, what, can you give me a list of vulnerabilities? Like, I don't understand.
I'd have to get the exact list from two people.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Okay. And there are three vulnerabilities. Two of them have major, actually, three of them, I think, have, two of them have major cases out there. I've seen a book of all the cases. I did not personally research those cases.
Mr. Ferris, I think your time is up. Why don't you get with Mr. Whitaker, and y'all can talk about this then, bring the vulnerabilities up.
All right.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you. Okay. All right. Item number three. Discuss and take appropriate action to modify the budget hearing process to allow PowerPoints, visual aids, or other backup documents to be displayed at the budget hearing during the presenter's appointed time. Presentation of the PowerPoints, visual aids, or other backup documentation should not exceed five minutes of the presenter's time allocation. Visual aids may remain displayed in reference during the ensuing discussion. Ms. Samuelson, Commissioner Samuelson, would you like to explain what you...
Yes, thank you, thank you, Judge. I put this on the agenda, as you know, this is my first time going through the budget process as a Commissioner, and I, there was a memo that was issued to all the county department heads and elected officials, and it had a statement in there that PowerPoints were not allowed, and I really didn't understand why that was, and as the past several years, sitting in the audience as a taxpayer, it would have been very helpful to me, and it is a public hearing, and we are discussing taxpayer money. So, I just thought I would put this on the agenda to just modify the process. It doesn't say that they are required to bring it, but if elected officials and department heads have worked diligently on preparing their budget materials, I see no reason why they shouldn't be able to show it during their, the budget hearing to, one, help us discuss it, but also so that the public would be able to see it and reference it and help follow along with what's being discussed during the budget hearings. So, that's why I put it on here. I think it's in the vein of transparency. It is taxpayer money, and that's what we're discussing is the budget of how the money will be spent. So I just really strongly believe that it needs to be transparent, and that budget people that are coming up here, department heads and elected officials that are discussing their budget for the next year, should be able to show their, as we, as our teachers used to tell us, show your work. They should be able to show their work. So, that's...
We have two citizens signed up to speak on this. The first is Elizabeth Mercer.
Ah, back again. I just have a couple of questions.
Pull it down just a bit.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Is it better?
Yes.
Okay, I just have some questions that I'm not clear on. So I have 40 years of corporate experience, and I've made a PowerPoint presentation or two. So my question is, being physically responsible, do our department heads actually have the time to do this? Is it really necessary? Is it going to actually provide any kind of insight? I mean, I am all for transparency, and I'm not objecting to this. I'm just wondering, do our people have time? Seriously, do they have time, and is it really necessary? So that was just my question. I'm just trying to be responsible with our money.
So, what this is saying is if, if they've already provided it in the memo that we received, the request is that if they have any PowerPoints or backup material that they're to bring that to the court ahead of time, so we can go through it with them. But, so if they've already prepared it and they have it ready, I see no reason why they shouldn't be able to show it during court.
Right, and I understood that, but my, my question to you is every report I've ever made for a boss didn't include a PowerPoint.
Well, whether it's a PowerPoint, a spreadsheet, or whatever it is, any kind of backup material, they can take a picture of their notebook if they want to and show it.
So what you're saying is you just want something that you can have displayed on the screen if they have it for the public?
If they have it, right.
Okay, that, I was just not clear, because that just didn't seem like an appropriate use of time for paid employees.
They're already, they're already doing that to prepare their budget.
Well, this was specifying PowerPoint, that's why I asked you.
Or backup material.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Ed Elder.
Morning, Judge, Councilmembers. This is my first Commissioners Court meeting, and I'm so glad I came to see these, these young kids and all that goes on here, and, but there was no drama today. There's oftentimes drama, I've watched it, but, but I, I identify as a retired Marine and follower of Jesus Christ, and somebody that loves Texas, even though I moved here. I love transparency, and so this kind of caught my eye. Our Vice President, Kamala Harris, likes those three circle graphs. I kind of like those, and anything we can do to better communicate with folks, I think is a great thing. But, in all honesty, I have to admit that there was some quid pro quo involved with me coming to speak today, is Nanette said that she'd probably get her husband to play the steel guitar at Dave's Texas Flatbread House, you know, if I came to speak. But, anyway, I just, I'm glad to come here and express my appreciation for you folks that you ran for office, and, and I'm just, I'm just praying, I spoke at the school board meeting last night, I just pray that we could do things to bring the county and the city closer together, and I mentioned the, I'm not a Rotarian, but I love that, that the four-way test, I don't know if you're familiar with that, that when we, when we write or say something, you know, is it really, and it's biblical, are we really doing it to, to help make things better? And there's a time to speak truth and stuff like that, and I'm all over the map since I'm up here. Five minutes, I love it. Only get two minutes at the school board meeting, but Ms. Mercer too, I, she brought up a good point about the groundwater. I lived in Australia for a while, I was blessed to live down under, and I don't know if you folks know it, but it's a desert island, and most of people live close to the ocean there, but they're very innovative there and saving every drop of water. They capture the rainwater. So whoever's on these commissions or whatever, it, it does rain here in Texas, and Stevie Ray Vaughan, it even floods in Texas sometimes, but in Australians, actually, they funnel some of the rainwater into the, in the water table, but they also have storage tanks. So, water is precious, and it's going to be more precious as we continue to grow, so I appreciate you folks letting me talk, and I'm not going to take all the time, but God bless you, I appreciate you. Oh, and the, the thing is, I wish I could wear my hat. This is Texas, and I was told I couldn't wear my hat, so I don't know what we're going to do about that. I guess it'll just, anyway, God bless you all, I appreciate you.
It's not in here, okay? All right, thank you, sir. Okay. All right. Any other comments or questions by any of the Commissioners? If not, someone wanted to make a motion.
Yes, I'll make the motion to modify the budget hearing process to, and I'd like to change this word from allow to request. So, modify the budget hearing to request PowerPoints, visual aids, and other backup documents to be displayed at the budget hearing during the presenter's appointed time. Presentations of the PowerPoints, visual aids, or other backup documentation should not exceed five minutes of the presenter's time allocation. Visual aids may remain displayed and referred to during the ensuing discussion.
Here, second. Second. Motion made by Commissioner Samuelson to modify the budget hearing process to request PowerPoints, visual aids, and other backup documents to be displayed at the budget hearing during the presenter's appointed time, and that should not exceed five minutes of the presenter's time allocation. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, five to zero. Okay, the next item is number four. Consider and take appropriate action to pay the final invoice for the refurbishment of Engine 39. Final invoice is $327,746.43, which exceeds the requested amount of $325,000, approved in Commissioners Court on February the 22nd, 2022. The difference of $2,746.43 to be paid from Fund 55. Assistant Mr. Mike Stafford.
Judge, Commissioners? Yeah, Jeff's off getting some training, so we'll see if he gets any smarter. The original invoice was 321-876, and it said not to exceed 325. I believe Jeff had given you all this page, where they had some expenses that were not in the refurb deal, and it was $5,870.43 difference, which if, if you go through the 325, not to exceed 325, the budget amount, the repair for Engine 39 was $327,746.43, which makes the difference of $2,746.43. And that's what we, above the 325, that's what we owe for the, to refurb, to pay for the refurb.
Okay. Any comment, questions?
Yeah, I guess the long and the short of this is there were a few things that ended up not, not being part of the contract that they found wrong, and they needed to go ahead and fix it, and it had a major blowout on the way there, so they had to get some tires.
Yeah, it was, it was quite the ordeal for a while. Plus, they were, by, by the delay of everything, because of the difference in the amount, they also credited back $2,000 because they were several days late, and they do have the surcharge of $100 per day of being late from their original delivery date, so.
And Jeff did come and speak with me about this, and I really appreciate them giving me a heads up when they want to use Capital Projects money, make sure we have enough, and we're good. So I appreciate that.
I hear a motion.
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the, our $2,746.43 in addition to the already approved $325,000, to come out of Fund 55 to pay for the final invoice for Engine 39.
Second.
Motion made by Commissioner Andrews to pay the final invoice for the refurbishing of Engine 39 in the amount of $2,746.43 to be paid from Fund 55 in addition to the $325,000 that was already approved by the Commissioners Court. Second by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Be sure to tell Jeff Young that he can get his engine back, okay? Thank you. Okay, item number five. Consider and take appropriate action to approve order to authorize online education for Hood County Commissioners. Commissioner Eagle.
Thank you, Judge. About a year and a half ago, I went to a conference down in Georgetown of, we have to, by the way, I'll start out with Commissioners have to complete 16 hours minimum of continuing education every year to not get in trouble. And so, a year and a half ago, I went down to an October conference, picked up my hours, and one of the things that stemmed out of COVID was some video conferencing to take your, to get your, some of your classroom work. And the Commission, it has to be put according to the statute, which was amended after COVID hit by the legislature, the Commissioners Court has to actually have an order in place in order to allow that to happen. And I brought that before the court when I got back, thinking, didn't think it'd be a big deal. It doesn't say you have to do it. It's, it gives you an option to, to do online education to... to get some of those 16 hours. For some reason, it was voted down, and just to give you a little background, I just completed my continuing legal education for my law license, and you can do it all online if you want to. So, this is merely an option, I'm bringing it back to the court, asking the court to reconsider this as an option, because let's say, for instance, if you go down to Waco, to the AGRA Extension Conference that they give for free, it's just a matter of going down there, and they have a steak tips lunch, very nice, you pick up 6.75 hours, so there's, there's some off, off numbers where you can't make exactly 16. If you could go pick up a three-hour course somewhere, you might be able to finish your 16. So, anyway, I'm bringing that back to the court, it is an option, it's not mandatory, it saves travel expense, it saves food expense and other expenses, hotel, if you do something online. And I do like to go to conferences, I think it's very good for networking, but I do like the option of picking up, if I, if I'm two hours short, why not pick it up online and save the county some money? So, that's why I brought this back, and if you still want to go down to all your conferences in person, there's no, nothing stopping you. So, that's why I'm bringing it back, and it's an order that has to be, a motion made, seconded, and voted on, and, and if we vote to put it in here, then it just gives us that option, that's all it does. The only caveat is that a first-year Commissioner cannot take advantage of it. And so, Commissioner Samuelson would not be able to, to do it online until after the first of next year. That's the only caveat to the order. And right now, for instance, well, is there any courses that you can take? Yes, there is a course coming up actually in May, it's a county technology conference that's going to be down at the Kalahari Resort in Georgetown, about IT and, and just many, it's called a hybrid event, but you can, you can go down to Kalahari and spend a bunch of money and take this conference, or you can do it here at your desk. So, if, if we pass this today, so that's, that's why I brought it back, hoping that maybe we can get this through this time.
Anybody else have a comment, any other Commissioners say anything, have a question? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, Judge, I'll make a motion that we approve the order to authorize online education for Hood County Commissioners.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, we do have two of them. I'm sorry, Harold Graddock, you're Speaker number one.
I'll take my motion back until we.
Okay.
Okay, yes, as, I did lots of continued education in the medicine field, as Commissioner Eagle's commented, in the legal field, and Judge Massengill, I'm sure, has done lots of continued med, medical education. One thing that the COVID taught us is this education that students had all across the country at all levels was not the same as in-person education. It's not just what you do during the course, but there's also the interaction of other people taking the course, and that's as fruitful, both, I'm sure that, not only the things that Commissioner Eagle can learn from other people, but Commissioner Eagle contributes to interacting with other people taking those courses. And I think that you cannot replace that just with the remote learning. And so, yes, you save a little money for the taxpayer by doing it remotely, but you also lose the quality and the information you get from all these other sources of people who have the same kind of problem. So, I think we should not allow this, and I think we should continue what's been in the past, archaic as I may be. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tina Brown has also signed up to speak on this topic.
So, when you do this course, like this one you were talking about, are you just watching? Are you interacting? How, how would we even know that you took the course?
So, they have a web imprint, in other words, when you sign on, it, Drew could maybe explain it better than me, but they under, they know that you're on the, on the conference, and you can also enter, you can set up to interact with it if you want. It's a, it is an interactive setup, yes.
But you could get online, and then you could go work on your car, or go watch a movie? I mean, how would, how would we know that these courses were even, I mean, kids did this, you know, during COVID, you know, they, they didn't, they, they went off and did other things. How would we know that these courses were actually being done?
Well, you get credit for, by being signed up for it.
By logging in.
And by logging in, and if you don't trust your elected officials anymore than that, maybe you need to elect somebody else next time.
Well, that's true. Also, why, do you know why this was turned down last time? Does anybody remember why it was turned down?
I have no idea.
Okay, so, I'm also concerned about, you know, you want to talk about saving taxpayer money, but you're okay with the county clerk wasting taxpayer money?
The county clerk is not on this agenda item.
Well, that's true, but taxpayer money is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brown, all right.
I guess.
Anybody else do?
Yeah, I'll say something. I, I guess just to follow up on that, you know, I went to my first training in person, and I will continue to go in person for a year, but, you know, there were, I was sitting at a table, there's nothing to say that when you sign up to go, that you're there physically watching and not out playing golf, or having dinner, or something else. So, just because you travel to go to a conference doesn't mean you're sitting there paying attention and doing what you're supposed to be doing, so, there's that.
And these can be pretty dry, and that after lunch, there are oftentimes some bobbing heads in those classes, I'll tell you that. I, you know, I don't, I, I know for my EMT licensure, you can take everything on, online, there's a, you know, this is, I don't, I don't see any reason to not allow, if, if a Commissioner chooses to take this online, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't allow that.
Well, I, you know, I wasn't going to say this, but now that the two Commissioners on the other end have opened the door, I can guarantee you, and it wasn't me, and I, there's a guy named Not Me, by the way, at my house, that when I ask who did such and such, it's not me, but it wasn't me, but believe me, you go to a conference, and you go after lunch, and about a third of the people that had signed up that were there this morning aren't there, especially at the Kalahari Resorts. So, if you're worried about the integrity of somebody doing what they're supposed to be doing, you're dreaming, if you think that they go down to a conference, if they want to game the system, they're going to game the system, it doesn't matter. So, again, it's about whether you want to take the course and you want to learn the material. Personally, for me, I like to learn the material. I like to print off the, the documentation that goes with it, and I also like to print off the PowerPoint presentation that they give, and I like to download it. And sometimes you can't do that when you actually go in person. I see Ms. Ferguson up there nodding her head about that, she knows. So, again, I, here's what happened in October. I thought I would come in here with this little order for, allow us the option of taking a online course to get our 16 hours, some of our 16 hours, and it would take 60 seconds. It would be a no-brainer when I sat down with that agenda item. And here we are, now 10 minutes into the same item, over people wanting to tell us the way they think we ought to do things. Well, again, I'm going to go ahead and put my motion back on the table, that we approve the order to authorize the option of online education for Hood County Commissioners. Period.
Second.
Okay, a motion is made by Commissioner Eagle to approve an order authorizing online education as an option for Hood County Commissioners. Second by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion or comment? I just wish to make one thing in the comments section up here, the first time it was turned down is that the Judges and Instructors up there say by going to these conferences, by associating with other county Judges and with other Commissioners, you do build up a camaraderie, that if comments or problems happen, you can pick up a phone and call the other Commissioners or Judges, and there is a sense of, the same problems have occurred there, and I think, to best of my recollection, that's why it was voted down the last time. So, it was because of that. So, with that discussion, I now call for the vote. All those in favor of the option of giving the Commissioner, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. The motion carries three to two. Okay, item number six, discuss and take appropriate action to allow the Office of Emergency Management to create and maintain their own social media accounts. Ms. Margaret Campbell. Yes, ma'am.
Judge, Commissioners, thank you. I wanted this on the agenda because I see a need for Emergency Management to have their own social media accounts. Many other, well, all the surrounding counties around us do have their own Emergency Management accounts that they maintain, they provide updates to the community with them. Currently, we are only using the main Hood County Facebook account, Twitter account, things like that, which is great, but because it is a county-wide account, I don't want to take up all of their bandwidth, asking them to post our stuff. So, we only post critical information, evacuations, severe weather, things like that. I think we're kind of missing a lot of things that we could be putting out, such as emergency preparedness, mitigation, protection, things like that. In addition to that, a lot of our surrounding counties are using it for recovery. After a severe storm, they're using it as a way to distribute recovery information. That way, we're aware, that way we can send the correct people out, such as Red Cross or the state, whoever. So, I think it would greatly benefit, and it would just make communication between my office and the community a lot easier.
Okay. Any Commissioners have any question or comment?
I've had several contacts by citizens, not only in Precinct 3, but in, all across the county, wanting a larger input from the Emergency Management people on the social media side. It seems that's where most people get their information now, is on social media, and this is just another avenue of being able to provide proper information to the citizens.
Yeah, I agree. During the fires last year, there were, my phone was blowing up, people wanting information. To be able to get that information out directly, yeah, that's, that's a great idea.
Yeah, and, and information changes really quickly, obviously during an emergency, and it's really hard to get IT to be able to post things quickly, but then also respond back, because sometimes community members have questions. And IT, I mean, they try to respond back, but they don't always have all the information. So, if it's on our account, my office can be maintaining it and responding back timely to people that might be in danger or might need something.
We discussed there's no ongoing cost to this, it's just labor within your current department that will be maintaining it.
Yes, that's correct. And IT has also offered to help us maintain it. So, if we are just inundated in an emergency, IT has said that they were willing to post things on our behalf as well.
And are you talking about which social media, just Facebook or?
I would prefer Facebook and Twitter. Twitter is kind of taking off as far as Emergency Management goes as well. That would be my preference, would be to do.
Hey, anything else? Do I hear a motion?
I got a question first. Are you going to be the, in charge of putting the information out there and taking care of it?
Yes, between myself and April, our Emergency Management Planner, yeah.
So, you're going to be doing that all on your own?
With the help of IT, yes.
So, they'll help you get started and get moving?
Yes, that's correct.
So, last night, when I was at the school board meeting, I spoke of a term called double think. And double think comes from George Orwell's 1984, and the proposition for double think is to have two opposing ideas in your mind, and accepting them both is true. So, the prior, and I just, I can't help but make this comment, I'm sorry. The prior agenda item, the Commissioners can't be trusted to go online and do their extra training for their continuing education, but we can hand over Facebook page to be managed by our very well-versed and capable Emergency Management person, and that's fine. And I'm just pointing that out because I'm all in favor of her taking care of the Facebook page for Emergency Management, but I cannot help but point out the double think here.
Well, I have to respond to that. You do not speak for me when you said that that's why I voted against it. I explained that the reason that it was turned down the first time is that by going to these meetings and meeting other county Judges from all over the state, other Commissioners from surrounding counties or whatever, you build up a certain camaraderie that you can call upon these people, and they will help you with whatever problem that you're facing. And I do that quite a bit. I have a very good rapport with Danny Chambers, the Commission, the County Judge in Somerville County, we're on a bunch of committees together, I'm with the Parker County Judge, with the E-Rath County Judge, and with other Judges that I've met across the state. That's why I think it's a benefit, that's why I voted against it the first time, and why I voted against it the second time, not because I don't trust anybody that's sitting up here with me on the dais here. So, I want to clear that perception of Commissioner Eagle does not speak for County Judge Ron Massengill about that. That's why I voted against it, not because I don't trust anybody. So, any other comment or question? If not, I call for the question. All those in favor of allowing the.
Need a motion first, Judge.
Yeah, I said it, is there a motion?
Yes, I move that we allow the Office of Emergency Management to create and maintain their own social media accounts.
Second. Okay, we have a motion made by Commissioner Wilson to allow the Office of Emergency Management to create and maintain their own social media account. Second by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion or comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you very much, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Item number seven, discuss and take appropriate action to accept the opioid settlement funds into a separate revenue account to ensure funds are easily recognizable, not commingled with other miscellaneous revenue funds, and to provide transparency. Funds will remain in this account until such time as the Members of the Commissioners have reviewed the allowed uses of the funds and determined the best course of action for use of the funds. I think Becky Kidd, you wanted to respond to this?
So, I would like to utilize Fund 62. We have not used that in many, many years. This will keep this completely separate. There are already line accounts set up that I don't have to create, and if we have more money coming in, it can go in here, and it will be completely separate. I don't want to keep it in Fund 10, just leave it there as a placeholder till today, we decide, and Fund 62 is a good place. With that being said, I've reached out, because of, everyone has received this, I reached out to Ricky Reeves, the Sheriff, Shelley Berry, and I asked the Judge to talk to City Police Off, his name escapes me.
Chris Kaufman?
Chris Kaufman, and then Jeremy.
And Jeremy Glenn, I haven't had a chance at this morning.
What I'm seeing in this handout is mainly that it's preventative. So, I really would have liked to have been able to say, hey, Court, we can take this, and all these drug busts that the Sheriff did, let's reimburse that, that would help. But what I've read so far, it looks like we need to be on the preventative side, treatment, therapy, things of that nature. So, that's what these entities are looking at. Ricky Reeves said they've spent a lot of money on NarCam, and that's a big need. So, I've asked him to give me a two-year, go back two years, what you've spent. We could also, I know we're, we're not voting on it, but these are some of the things that we did, talked about yesterday, we got real busy and tried to see what we could do, because this is, you know, it's $91,000, that's a hefty amount of money, and we want to utilize it properly. We know that we may get more, we also know that the, there's a lady that's with this organization, she said, you won't. We also know that the, there's a lady that's with this organization, she said you won't have to do reporting. Do I believe that? No, no. You always have to come back and say, this is what we did. So putting in a Fund 62 with the proper line accounts, you'll be golden. So that's my recommendation for this.
Okay. Any questions or comments of Ms. Kidd?
And that amount is $91,698.08, correct?
Yes, and that is speaking, well, Matt actually reached out to attorney at the Attorney General's office, and I asked, I also had a question, because I wasn't, I didn't understand if this was related to one specific participation that the prior court had participated in, or if this was an aggregate of all of the ones that had been. And this is, it's kind of a little of both, but we should expect to receive additional settlement funds based on the opioid participation document that we signed last court. So just looking at this and kind of going off of what you said on the document that we received that kind of goes through all the preventative things, what dawned on me was, you know, we really need some experts to tell us what these funds, where the best uses of these funds. So I'd like to propose that we, the five of us, put together a five-member team that is law enforcement, mental health, medical backgrounds, experts around the community to come back with a proposal to tell us what is the best use for these funds.
Well, right now, we just have to place to park the funds, because we received the $91,000, so.
Fund 62.
So we're not, we're just going to park the funds now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good. And you're suggesting Fund 62?
Yes, I will change the name of it.
Right, okay. You changed the name to?
Right now, it says TexDOT Highway.
Yeah.
Which.
Yeah, we won't use that.
Never use that.
All right, we have one speaker, Tina Brown. Thank you, Ms. Kidd.
I guess I'm just confused on the wording of that, like commingled, like has this, has it, we had any revenue that's been commingled and not known where it went?
That's two different things.
Okay, have we had money commingled?
We have one account that's called miscellaneous revenue that various things can be put in there when they're received, so, and that would mean that there's multiple sources of funds, small fees or whatever, that are in the same account. But, you know, Becky has mentioned that this is going to be put into another fund that'll be specifically directed for this money, so then it won't be commingled with other funds.
Okay, well, I just had a question about, it sounded like money had been commingled and spent where it wasn't supposed to be spent.
No, no, that's not.
Okay, thank you.
I didn't hear the first part of Ms. Brown's question, or whatever she was asking.
Speak into the microphone, please, Ms. Kidd.
I'm sorry. Generally, when we receive money, it is put in a holding account with the treasurer's office until the court decides. So yes, it's almost always put in the general fund, but the treasurer does an excellent job of saying, this money's right here, we're not going to do anything with it. And she lets me know, hey, this money's come in, what do you think, what are we going to do? Now, if it's small amount, a small amount, like a workman's comp refund of about $4,000, that's just going to go into miscellaneous revenue. That's not going to, we don't come to court with small amounts like that, because those happen like every other year. It's just a waste of time to put that on the agenda. It's not going to help us to put it back in the line account it came from, because usually the refund is two years later. So we just put it in miscellaneous revenue. But again, we do get money like this on a regular basis. There's a process, and it's followed perfectly. Just want to make sure everyone knew that.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we accept the opioid settlement funds into Fund 62 in the amount of $91,698.08. You know, and then we go forward with the accountability from that, once it's in that, and the county auditor will change the title of that fund.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Do you mind repeating that?
The motion is that we take these opioid settlement funds in the amount of $91,608 and put those funds into Fund 62, which is a pre-existing revenue account formerly known as TexDOT, and change it to opioid settlement, so it'll be clearly, and the funds remain there until the commissioners' court have reviewed and taken appropriate steps in finding what the funds can be used for.
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to that effect, second by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries five zero. Okay, item number eight. Discuss and take appropriate action to approve a request from Elections Administration to reserve $66,000 to $130,000 in Fund 55 for the purchase of election equipment in May or June. The exact amount will be determined by the outcome of the current legislation. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Election Administrator. Welcome.
Thanks. So first, I just want to give you the purpose of why I'm putting this on here. Hood County is growing, and in 2024, it's going to be a wild election year, as you guys probably already know. And I want to add one more polling location. So what I've done is gotten a quote for the equipment that we would need to send out to this location, and the quote is about $67,000. But I don't want to make any purchases yet, because legislation right now has over 400 election bills that could significantly change the structure of how the elections run. So I just wanted to put this on there to reserve this amount of money in the event anything goes wild and I have to kind of restructure everything, we at least have it. Or I can at least get the stuff that will go to this new polling place.
You have an open quote that expires on April the 2nd.
I do, but I can get.
Are those items going to be needed no matter what the legislators do, or is this in, you know, preparing for what we think the legislators may do?
So this, the quote is for current law, for the equipment that we currently have. But there's a few bills out there right now that could change the entire way I.
But is that, are those bills, if they do pass, is it going to change this, or is this going to be?
This won't be what I purchase anymore.
Okay.
So depending, what?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
It's okay.
All right, I was just going to say, this is, to earmark these funds, you had talked about this before, it's not necessarily agreeing to a purchase, it's just saying, hey, in Fund 55, we've got a purchase coming, we don't necessarily know exactly what that's going to look like in a couple of months after the legislative session ends, but we need to have this money aside and ready to go when that time comes, when that decision's made, correct?
And as long as nothing wild happens, then I can purchase this set of equipment that's on that quote, and it will be fine.
And that would be in this budget year? You'll know, because legislature will be over, you'll know.
In May, yeah.
Okay.
It'll end in May.
Just, when you say a new polling location, is that an additional than what we got, or is that just moving one from point A to point B?
It's an addition too.
Okay.
So as we talk, there is some, there are some funds in the HAVA grant fund, so you can utilize those as well. You've talked to Ms. Kidd about that?
Yes, and I don't want to put a dollar amount on that quite yet, because I'm in the middle of closing out the 2020 HAVA funds with the state. And as soon as that's done, then I'll be comfortable putting a dollar amount from that.
Okay, so somewhere, some of the $30,000 that's in the HAVA grant fund could be used for this?
Yes.
She's had several conversations with me, she's doing a wonderful job of taking care of the county, and I highly encourage her to come forth with getting this equipment, because, so just telling Glenn, we ordered trucks in 2021. I paid for them last court. So if you need this, get it ordered.
Yeah, well, she's not going to be able to. She's not going to be able to order it till after the legislative session, just to be on the safe side, is what I'm hearing.
Right, but I want to earmark this money, so that I know I'm going to be able to make the purchase, and so that you guys are aware of what's coming down the pipeline as we get closer.
You're not going to lose the price, though, can you, I think you were about to say that you can extend?
I can reach out to the vendor, they're pretty good about working with me in regards to the prices, yeah.
Okay, all right, good deal. All right, well, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we authorize and reserve between $66,000 or the not to exceed of $130,000 in Fund 55 for the purchase of possible election equipment in the May or June timeframe after the legislature's end on May 29th, 2023. And will, that number, that amount will have to be determined by the legislation that they pass.
Your second?
Second.
Okay. Motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the request from the Elections Administrator to reserve $66,000 to $130,000 in Fund 55 for the purchase of election equipment in or around May 29th, and the legislature's over, depending on what they actually pass into law determining the outcome of the current legislation as to what equipment the Election Administration needs. Second, by Commissioner Andrews. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Thank you, Ms. Cooper. Okay. Next is item number nine. Consider and take appropriate action to issue Rolling Hill Shores 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30th of 2023. Rolling Hills is having a community cleanup day on May 20th, 2023. Okay, Commissioner, oh, Jeanne Stacks, please.
Yes, we normally do vouchers at least once a year for several of the subdivisions when they do their cleanups, and Rolling Hill Shores is the first one to reach out this year requesting vouchers to Commissioner Andrews. So we've done, been doing this in the past, and that allows them to go to the collection station.
Yeah, spring, spring cleaning time, and I could get them, get them a little help in that, so.
I think everybody's in favor of that. Anybody else have a comment, or do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I make a motion to issue Rolling Hill Shores 10 vouchers for the Hood County Collection, or Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30th, 2023.
Okay. Yeah, motion made by Commissioner Andrews to issue Rolling Hill Shores 10 vouchers for the Hood County Citizens Collection Station with an expiration date of September 30th of 2023. Second, by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimously five zero. Next item is item number 10. We have a couple of speakers about that, but item number 10 is to discuss and take appropriate action to adopt a resolution in support of House Bill 2835 to designate a portion of State Highway 144 as the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway. Commissioner Samuelson, you want to start us off?
Yes, thank you, Judge. I'd like to introduce Tim Bolton and Eva Royer to come up to the podium and tell us about Mr. Shipman, and I think that our IT department hopefully has that video on cue for you when you're ready.
Thank you. I'll let you just play the video, though, that would be great.
Okay.
Please.
I've had a wonderful life, in the sense that God has let me be a part of the lives of so many people.
Ed's accomplishments over the years have been nothing short of remarkable. I think that's the one thing I will always take away from Ed, is his just dogged determination in good times and bad times. He has a vision, and that vision is being lived out every day at the farm.
For as long as I can remember, I've grown up fundraising and traveling with my grandfather. I started when I was five, riding in his Suburban, going to generous donors around the Metroplex and meeting them and learning what he does. He's shown me through all of that, he does it for the love of children, to help them and transform them, and create and grow Christian individuals that will be productive citizens in our country.
One of my favorite things about my grandfather is to watch him interact with the alumni that come back to campus. They genuinely see him as their grandfather. His presence is just such a settling presence to all of us. And that's going to be hard to not have that every day, but when I was a kid and I didn't understand him, or what he was doing, or the reason that any of this mattered, you know, I could have easily thought of a world without him, you know? And now that's exceedingly difficult, because I understand the legacy that he's left, and the fact that we have some kids enrolled in our school who are kids of kids who have graduated, which is an amazing thing. I mean, what kind of gift is that, to not just be able to impact a few kids, but generations of the same family positively? I just, it's just a wonderful thing we have, he's given us to carry on.
His determination, his hard work, his perseverance, even when times were tough, his goal every day was to help children, and he never lost sight of that. I think what my brother and I took away the most from spending so much time with my dad is his genuine Christian concern for people, and the love he showed to people regardless of their background or their position in life. And he taught us to always help people in any way that we could.
If I would want to make one point to some young Christian out there, pastor, family man, salesman, whatever, make yourself available. I mean, it's, the opportunities will be there, spirit of God will open them up to you, but most folks just sort of, that's as far as they go. I mean, they hear it, they go home, they live six more days, exactly the way they did before. But just make yourself available, and then look around, it's just a miracle, one miracle after the other. Not without hard work. I figured out a long time ago, you pray hard, you work hard, and they go together. But blessing upon blessing upon blessing.
I think Ed Shipman's legacy will be his wonderful heart, and how big it is and was, and how much he loved and cared for every single person that he encountered, and every single person that came to this school, and every single person that ever worked for him. Mr. Shipman, without him, like, I don't think I could have done it. I think I would have still been a lost kid, not knowing what to do, and being doubtful, and always being stressed out. Without Mr. Shipman, I don't think I would be the person I am today.
Mr. Shipman is such a great man. I mean, to build all this from almost nothing, and of course, the Lord helped him, but all this perseverance he's had, I mean, I know I couldn't last that long, I mean, starting from practically nothing with only God. I mean, he's almost like Abraham in a ways. God just called him to start this place, and I'm sure that he's converted so many people to Christianity.
I think I want people to most remember and know about him, that he was the most selfless, giving man I've ever met, and gave his whole life in every way to help serve others.
Roy and I have done this together, 62 years. Thank you, thank you, thank you. She's special. She is special, isn't she, Lucas?
Yep.
Yep, she's special. And then my grandkids, and now my beautiful great-grandkids. So many blessings. It would be fun to get to heaven someday and see all the people whose paths you've crossed, and that have interacted with you, and you've blessed them, and they've blessed you. I love that scene from C.S. Lewis's The Great Divorce, in which he describes the lady out in the field of flowers, and the kids, you know, running toward her. Lucas, I've said so much, you don't have anything to say? Lucas, I've said so much, you don't have anything to say?
Well, that, that was probably a mistake to play that first, because it makes me get choked up. So, well, good morning, thank you, Judge and Commissioners, for helping me honor Ed Shipman. I'm, I'm a living testimony to, to that. I mean, that 40 years ago, almost to the day, actually, I went there, April, I was thinking about this this morning, I went to the farm April 6 of 83, so I'm really 40, 40 years gone since then. But, but that's me, though, a living testimony to that good man. So, a father figure for me for many years, even after I graduated from the farm, I continued to stay in touch with him and I, even still, just, this is my own pride, but, but I still consider myself the farm's best success story. I mean, I know the path I was on and where I was headed at the time, and so that certainly changed the trajectory, trajectory of my life. And, you know, that was, he, he was a facilitator of my faith and certainly a life-changing event for me. And so, in the years following, even after my graduation, we stayed in touch and I continued to give testimony and help him with fundraisers and all of that sort of thing, I still do even now. So, anyway, would just do justice to him, I think, and he died six years ago, and an honor for his wife, who is still alive, to be able to do that for, really, anybody who drives down that highway, to have that sort of recognition. So, I appreciate you guys supporting that. It's in committee right now in the House, and so your endorsement would really help to kind of maybe move that along, and so I appreciate that.
I would like.
Yeah, please.
I'd like to say a couple of words as well. I met Ed Shipman 30 years ago when he was fundraising, and the agency that I worked for jumped on board, and they, part of their fundraising was the Dallas Cowboy Wives Cookbook that they published every year, and that's how they donated funds to the farm. With all of that being said, Tim and I have known each other for 30-plus years now. His boys actually went to the farm as well, where they didn't have to, because it was such a life-changing part of his life that he wanted to offer that to his boys as well. So, moving forward, we talked to Senator Birdwell, they're on board, and they love this idea, and they want to be able to recognize the six miles in front of the farm as the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway. He asked us to take it to Representative Slosson and Burns, because it is part of Hood County and Somerville County. Representative Burns is actually the one who drafted the bill. Slosson, she asked that they actually do, because most of it is in Somerville County, but she is going to write a resolution that's going to be read into the floor as well. And so, our ask today is, because we have all of these endorsements on that side, we would love the Hood County Commissioner Court to be a part of that, to honor this great man, who, he is such a great steward for children around the, just here in the county, but it goes farther and wider. And if you were to talk to Jerry Jones, I don't know what your opinion is on all of that, but he is a huge proponent of children and faith, and as we grow them here in Hood and Somerville County, I just think that if we could honor Ed Shipman in this process, for his years and years and years, I met him when he was driving in his Suburban to my ad agency, and we jumped on board immediately. If you were ever to meet Ed Shipman, and it was such a treasure to do something, we get choked up and we're in tears here because he is such an incredible man of God. Thank you.
What I know about Ed Shipman is that he could talk to any titan of business, have no appointment. They'd call up there and his secretary would say, "Ed Shipman is here to see you." They would step out of whatever they were doing and talk to Ed Shipman then and there. And he was a heck of a fundraiser. Nobody ever turned him down. So, we're all aboard on that. I mean, he's a great man. All of us have heard about him.
Thanks for that.
I called the Somerville, because like you said, the most of the farm, or the Happy Hills Farm in Elton, Texas Academy, more of an elite school, is mostly in Somerville County, and I called Judge Chambers from Somerville and said, "I think this is an excellent idea." And he said, "Well, I'm all on board with that, too." And he's saying, "Could we do a joint resolution about that?" And, of course, the timing is the only thing. I think you're saying that's in committee now. Of course, I don't want to, I would prefer it if we'd had the time to have a joint resolution with both Somerville County and Hood County. Because that whole stretch is in both counties, to say, "Hey, we're all in favor of it. Let's name the whole highway the Ed Shipman." Us don't narrow down just that six miles, but between Somerville County and Hood County, let's name that whole portion of it the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway. But if y'all think it's more important to send a message to the committee right now to get this resolution out today, we could take another resolution and modify it and do a joint one with Somerville County. And to say we'd like to expand it, I think both counties are, everybody would be in favor of that, just to name the whole deal, the Ed Shipman from beginning to end, wouldn't that be great?
Yes, that's very nice. Thank you. Thank you. I like the approach, too. I mean, I think that if we can to move ahead today and then come back and do the joint, and I like that, what you're saying even earlier, I even wrote down Danny Chambers on my note, because I wanted you to try to leverage that, to try to do something with him as well.
I did, and he was totally on board with that. He said he would take it to his councilman, so if y'all really think it will help it get out of committee, because that's what we should do, so I guess maybe we go ahead and pass this resolution right now, you think? And then I'll work with Judge Chambers to see about getting it passed, and we can come back and get another resolution, a joint resolution for our next commissioners, committee. I think that would pass. I can't believe anybody would have anything negative to say about Ed Shipman, that's for sure. I'd like to.
So, we haven't voted yet, but could we read this?
Yeah, okay. You want to go ahead? You can read it.
So, it says, "Whereas Ed Shipman and his wife Gloria opened the children's home and academy in 1975, a Happy Hill Farm, at Happy Hill Farms located at 3846 North Highway 144, and whereas Mr. Shipman's goal was to help bolster Happy Hill Farms' future ability to provide children with college preparatory education and to train, and the training necessary to produce men and women with compassion and character, and whereas Mr. Shipman is quoted as saying, 'We are dedicated to cultivating the spiritual virtues our young people need as they prepare to become leaders in their families, churches, and communities. And whereas Representative Dwayne Burns has introduced House Bill 2835 to designate a portion of State Highway 144 in, in Hood and Somerville Counties as the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway, and whereas the Hood County Commissioners Court wishes to recognize the life's work of Mr. Ed Shipman, his contributions to the communities of Hood and Somerville Counties and beyond, and his impact to the lives of innumerable young people over the last 48 years. And now therefore be it resolved that the Hood County Commissioners Court expresses its full support to designate a portion of Highway 144 in Hood and Somerville Counties between the intersections of US Highway 67 and the intersection with Mitchell Bend Highway to be designated as the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway, as described in House Bill 2835 of the 88th Legislature of Texas. In addition to any other designations, and respects, respectfully requests the Texas Legislature to vote to enact this bill."
Amen.
Thank you.
Well, now that we've read it, do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to, well, do we, yes, okay. I'll make the motion to take appropriate action to adopt a resolution in support of House Bill 2835 to designate a portion of State Highway 144 as the Ed Shipman Memorial Highway.
Second. Motion had made.
Did you say you got another speaker?
Yes, yes, we do. I'm sorry, Jerry Doherty. Is Jerry Doherty here? I did, got a lot of moving parts here today. Welcome, welcome.
That's fine. I'm certainly not coming forward to disagree with what we're talking about here.
Thank you.
In fact, I'm, I'm pleased for the opportunity to address the Commissioners Court on something that I can stand here and stand in favor of. Unfortunately, I speak somewhat frequently at the school board, and seldom am I in favor of anything that they're doing. But in this particular case, I moved to Hood County some 30 years ago, and was very quickly introduced to Ed Shipman by a mutual friend. And being a retired educator, I was very interested in what was going on at Happy Hill Farm. And I, reading the, the positive vibes that I'm getting, I'm not going to belabor a lot of points, but I was greatly impressed with the fact that Ed and Gloria Shipman recognized the value of family as the fundamental building block of the American society. And they established a living situation there that provided for a, a home kind of environment, a family kind of environment, for a group of children that I refer to as throwaway children. In fact, as I understand it, Happy Hill Farm came into existence in large measure because the sheriff of Somerville County had taken into custody some children, and they weren't criminals, but they had no place to put them. And he went to Ed and asked if he could help him out. And Ed was a solving, a problem solver, and the problem that he solved was what to do with these type of children, and then now you see Happy Hill Farm as a result of that. So, I'm, I'm very impressed with what he did. Of probably the only really regret I have about what we're doing here is that somewhere along the line, I didn't see fit to put Gloria's name on there as well. Because when you drive down 144 and you look off out at Happy Hill Farm, what you see visually is in large measure Gloria. What you see, what you see operational was Ed. Ed was a man who was willing to give you the shirt off of his proverbial back. But we also had another interesting dynamic. If he found out that you had an extra shirt, he had a way of getting that shirt for Happy Hill Farm. So, I urge you to, to pass this resolution. If there's any way to get Gloria's name attached to it, that would be even better.
I think that's a great idea. I don't know how the bill stated on the deal, but it does not state Gloria's.
So, I had that thought, too. Thank you for that. I had that thought, too, but I wanted to call it memorial, and I wanted it to, I wanted her to receive the honor of his name on it while she's still alive. And then I think my, my thought on that then subsequently was to add her name after the fact. I didn't want to call it Memorial Highway while she's still alive.
I see what you're saying. Ah, yeah, that's a good point.
But I want that, too, for her.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, do I hear a motion?
We've already done that.
We had a motion. Yes, okay. So now, we have a motion and second support this. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No opposition. So, it passes five to seven. We, yeah, sure. Y'all want to, Mr., okay. Mr. Bowman, you want to set, set up there, you, both of you? And Mr. Terry Doherty, you want to be in this picture, too?
Not at all.
Not at all.
Oh.
Mr. Doherty, you want to come on here?
No, sir, this law, we show up to Hood County, we would rather not be there.
Okay. Thank y'all very much. Okay. The last item is item number 11. Discuss and consider an approach to the 2023-2024 budget cycle, wherein all Commissioners coordinate with assigned departments to arrive at a budget proposal for each department prior to the June 2023 budget hearings. No action will be taken. Commissioner Eagle.
Thank you, Judge. Just throwing this on the table for discussion, and I'm not blaming Mr. Mills, but I'm alluding to Mr. Mills. This will be my fifth budget cycle for me, as, as it will be for the judge. And a few years ago, we, we have a routine of doing a budget, as you know, and people come up to the podium and, and pitch their individual departments. And Mr. Mills has mentioned to me some time ago that a good idea might be for each Commissioner or us to divvy up the apartment, departments. Each Commissioner work with a, I think our budget's around $40 million, and plus or minus $10 million, each one of us work with certain departments to arrive at their budget, where we have firsthand knowledge of at least 25% of the county budget. If the judge wanted to take part in that, it could be 20%, divided up five ways. It is the, according to statute, the judge is the chief financial officer. And, but it doesn't, it doesn't really get into how to get where you get with your budget. Historically, since I've been in the court, it's been the, the judge and getting with the auditor, and then each department getting with the auditor for the, for their individual budgets. So, this is just putting something on the table for discussion. There's probably other, even other ideas that could be put in here about doing our budget cycle this time. But my thought was that if I could work with certain departments, because the entire budget is overwhelming, it's a lot of things to try to think about, and what each department is doing, and what they need, and, and what they, you know, what their budget is, and their costs and all that, and their personnel and everything else. So, it's just putting a conversation on the table for us to discuss, maybe trying a different thing. And I'm open for suggestions, but again, my idea would be for each one of us to have about, you know, divvy up the departments and work directly with the departments, elected officials, whatever. And it may be, maybe I'm crazy, I don't know, but I thought I would like to be able to work more hands-on with, with certain departments. And we could even draw straws for who gets what department, where there's no idea or no look of favoritism. So, I'm just throwing it on the table for discussion. It's not a action item, but I'm trying to, we've got, we do have a new Commissioner on board now, and the budget cycle is something that's painful for all of us, to say the least, but it might be a way to get more hands-on with each, with certain department heads. That's just, so it's just putting it on the table.
I think we have an opportunity to be talking about that in the ensuing weeks and kicking around a little bit, see what we can come up with. That's what I would like to do, so.
Sounds like a good idea to me, as far as, that way, I mean, as I, as I have observed the last few years, it's, it, it is hard for any one Commissioner to grasp the entire budget.
Does any commission wish to pull anything or question anything on the consent agenda? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, one has been made by Commissioner Wilson. You approve the consent agenda as made.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right. The next, we have Mr. Clint Head with Development.
Morning, Judge. Morning, Commissioners. We've got first of three public hearings. The first one's a public hearing for the replat of Pecan Plantation, Unit 9, Lot 1682R. This replat is in Precinct 2.
Okay. At this time, at 11:13, we're going to convene into a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Pecan Plantation, Unit 9, Lot 1682R. Okay, so we're now in public hearing.
This replat is being done to combine lots 1681 and 1682 at Pecan Plantation, Unit 9. It'll be creating a 0.69 of an acre lot called Lot 1682R. This property is located in the Water Quality District in Precinct 2 and will be served by A. Mudwater and Onsite Sewers Facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented if there's no speakers.
Okay. Anybody wish to say anything? Any comment?
Since there are a couple people here from Pecan Plantation, I just want to address that this is a, just combining two lots that the homeowner already owns into one lot.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Anything else? If not, at 11:14, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. So at this time, do I hear a motion?
Make the motion to consider the replat of Pecan Plantation, Unit 9, Lot 1682R.
Second. Samuelson to approve the replat of Unit 9, Lot 162R in Precinct 2, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Mr. Head.
Next is a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Deer Valley Estates, Tracks 3R and 6R. This replat is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1. And.
Okay. At this time, at 11:15, we're going to convene back into a public hearing.
This replat is located in the Road Corridor District of Precinct 1 and will be served by A. Mudwater and Onsite Sewers Facilities. All comments have been addressed. Staff recommends approval of the replat as presented if there's no speakers.
Okay. Anybody wish to say anything? Any comment?
Since there are a couple people here from Pecan Plantation, I just want to address that this is a, just combining two lots that the homeowner already owns into one lot.
Mm-hmm. Yes. Anything else? If not, at 11:14, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. So at this time, do I hear a motion?
Make the motion to consider the replat of Pecan Plantation, Unit 9, Lot 1682R.
Second. Samuelson to approve the replat of Unit 9, Lot 162R in Precinct 2, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Although, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Mr. Head.
Next is a public hearing to discuss and consider the replat of Deer Valley Estates, Tracks 3R and 6R. This replat is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1.
Okay. At this time, at 11:15, we're going to convene back into a public hearing.
This replat is located in the Road Corridor District of Precinct 1 and will be served by A. Mudwater and Onsite Sewers Facilities. This replat is being done to relocate the common line between Tracks 3R and 6R, creating a 6.005 acres track called Lot 3R, and 11.069 acres track called Lot, Track 6R. There are no streets proposed with this replat, but these tracks will access the existing private street portion of MacArthur Court and Paloxi Highway. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, at 11:16, we're going to convene back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make a motion to approve the replat of Deer Valley Estates, Tracks 3R and 6R.
Second. Seconded by Commissioner Wilson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. Next, Mr. Head.
Next is a public hearing for the site development plan of Hill City Horse Stop.
Okay. At this time, at 11:16, we're going to convene into a public hearing.
This prop, the property for this site development plan is located in the Road Corridor District in Precinct 1 and will be served by A. Mudwater and Onsite Sewers Facilities. The property is located at 7,000 Hill City Highway, Toler, and will be on 10 acres of 39.9 acres track out of the Joseph Doan survey, abstract number 145. The proposed site development plan proposes to have 30 recreational vehicle spaces. There are no variances with this site development plan. Text out as previously issued access permits. All comments have been addressed, and staff recommends approval as presented. And the Onsite Sewers Facility.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, at 11:17, we're convening back into Commissioners' Court. Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, Judge, I'll make the motion to approve the site development plan for Hill City Horse Stop RV Park.
A motion made by Commissioner Andrews to approve the site development plan for Hill City Horse Stop.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Samuelson.
You know, it's a pretty famous piece of property.
Do what now?
It's a famous piece of property. That's where they do all the river scenes for all the movies you see.
Well, I like the name.
All the westerns.
Hill City Horse Stop. You know where that is, don't you? Okay, all right.
Pool for horses.
And that's where they filmed the river scenes for like 1882 and a whole bunch of different
movies.
What was the filming of what?
The 1882.
Oh, really? Ah, well, then we got to prove it, don't we? So, all right. All those in favor of approving the site plan for Hill City Horse Stop, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five to zero unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Head. Financial, Ms. Becky Kidd.
Judge, Commissioners, for this court, your expenditures are $375,878 and a big fat nickel. The Auditor's Office has reviewed all these invoices, and we do recommend payment. And additionally, we have given you this list that's on the screen of payments over $10,000. Are there any questions regarding invoice or payments or anything else?
Any questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
Yes, I move that we pay the invoices for the period of March 8, 2023 to March 21, 2023, in the amount of $375,878.05.
Second. Seconded. A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to pay the invoice for the period of March 8, 2023 to March 21, 2023, seconded by Commissioner Eagle. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries five zero. What else you have, Ms. Kidd?
The next item of the monthly reports that we've received, you have the list, it's on the screen. We're still working with the county clerk. I have sent her revised monthly reports, and I just need her to review them, sign them, and get them back to me. And hopefully, that will be taking place very soon, so that these reports will be on the next, well, the second agenda in April. We are still working with Tyler for Justice of the Piece 1, 2, and 3. We're very close. It is a work in progress. We want it right. And Ashley has done an excellent job, as have everyone in IT. So we are working on that. Again, with any software, you're going to have issues. If you don't, I'm scared of that software.
Okay.
So we ask that you accept these reports as they have been presented.
Okay. Any questions or comments? If not, do I hear a motion?
I move that we approve the financial reports received and reviewed by the Audit Department for the period of March 1, 2023 to March 15, 2023.
Second.
A motion made by Commissioner Wilson to approve the financial reports, seconded by County Auditor, seconded by Commissioner Andrews. Any questions or comments?
Comment? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, five zero. Okay. This takes us down to, you don't have anything else, do you?
Oh, I have something else.
One more. Oh, you want to take credit for this? This is a.
Well, sure.
I want everybody to give, Ms. Kidd, you want a standing ovation for this. Discuss and consider adoption of a resolution directing the redemption of Hood County's outstanding limited tax bond, Series 2019, and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Would you like to explain that, Ms. Kidd?
This is the last bonded debt we have. After this, all you have left is the Crescent Bypass, which is interest-free, so we wouldn't even attempt to pay that off. But paying this off early, six years early, saves $357,955. That's a nice chunk of change. And that you, lady and gentleman, can say, you were here when you paid off the last debt. So I highly recommend we do this.
That pays for the fire engine.
For this Commissioners' Court.
I heard fire engine.
That pays for the fire engine.
That is inspiring, isn't it? Not many counties can say that, you know? So any questions or comments? Do I hear?
Of course, I have a question. So I asked what the interest rate was on this bond, because if this, it's 2.08%. And so just thinking about doing the right thing with the county's money, and if there's an opportunity with, you know, things are changing. If this were three, four years ago, I wouldn't have any question. But as you all know, the investment, return on investment for money is, has changed a lot with the Fed rate going up to 4.75% to 5% currently. So could we, and I think we should consider this before we do this, we could invest the money instead of, so let me just put in a perspective of my house. If I had a house that had a 2.08% interest, would I pay that off with, say I owed $300,000? Or would I invest the $300,000 and make 3.75% to 4% interest to, that would pay for the interest on the loan, plus return some funds to me? So let's think about that. Is this the right thing to do at this point in time, because the landscape has changed so much with money? So we have a 2.08, which you cannot get currently, because the bond rates have gone up so much. So the 2.08 is a pretty low-interest bond. And if we could invest that money over time, and I had a brief conversation with LeAnn, and I really would like to sit down with LeAnn and talk about this, is this the right thing to do at this time? Or could we make additional money that would pay the interest plus return, you know, just doing some rough figures with what bonds are going for now, treasury bonds, 3.75%, 3.48%, you know, things like that? Could we return additional money? So not only pay off the bond, but also return money to the Hood County that could be used instead of raising taxes, or it would be additional funds that the county could use with interest? So just want to throw that out there. Because things have changed, this were two years ago, probably wouldn't be a question. But things have changed dramatically in the investment landscape.
With that being said, we have over $3 million in debt service monies now that have to be paid. So you're not looking at a $5 million interest accruing amount at all. You're looking at 1.7. And what you would accrue over several years is not going to come anywhere near the $357,000 that you'll save. But we have to spend the money in debt service every year on debt. And right now, it's over 3 million. So it's not, that's why I want to get this done. The quicker we do this, the more money we save. And we're tied to interest rates through contracts anyway, correct?
Well, I mean, we would still have.
You don't need to speak that much.
Get up here.
You guys are going to get me here today. We still, I don't invest in bonds, just because I like my money liquid. I like to be able to pull it today if we need it. If there were ever a situation that we would need it, I would like to pull it. It's our investment funds. I mean, even if we paid the 5 million in debt, we still have 5 million we can invest. We still have other money. We're very blessed as a county. So we can invest more, and we can come together and talk about that.
But you can't do anything with the 3 million in Fund 92 at all. You can only keep about 12% or, it's either 12% or $12,000 at the end of the year, and that's all you could do with it. And again, being as it is taxpayer money, I want to use it prudently. And this will help us moving forward. When you get ready to do any building, you guys are in good shape. You're not going to have to burden the taxpayers, if at all, very much, because you're taking care of this now. This sets you guys up for a good future for building. Thank you, LeAnn.
Well, if I don't, if I could be so bold, I think, I think paying off a 2% note when in a 5% market is questionable. I agree with Commissioner Samuelson on that. And you say that it must be spent on debt. When must it be spent on debt? Because.
By September.
So we got $3 million, and all we can do is spend that on debt.
Absolutely.
And what happens if we don't?
We're going to be in trouble with the feds, because that's what it's for. It's taxpayer money to pay off debt. And that's what we have to do with it. And if you add the additional 1,700, you get all, you save this amount of money. You pay it off six years early. And again, you're just helping the taxpayers in the long run.
Well, I see your, I mean, I understand your reasoning, but if we pay off debt that's, we're paying 2% on, and then we want to do some sort of improvement where we got to go, where we go borrow $10 million and we're paying 5%, we're not helping the taxpayers.
You're going to have to borrow money anyway at some point in the very near future for your jail, regardless of what you're going to have to pay on that. It doesn't have any effect on this. You're still, and I believe this has been a discussion many times here, you're going to have to do something about the current jail situation. This frees you up to have more money to do so. If you borrow money tomorrow for the jail, I don't know what interest rate you'll pay. We have very, very good financial advisors. They farm this out. They get the percentage rates. We make sure we get something that is what's called non-callable, so we can pay it off early. And they can't make us pay it off early. Either way, we're, it's a win-win. But with doing this for the next year, you put 3.5 million in a building fund. So you already are ahead of the game. What you would have paid on debt, you put it in a building fund. And then your payment probably wouldn't come due until February of '25. That's a long time from now. But that's probably the most, the quickest way that you're ever going to get a bill. But you have to jump on that and start building your jail pretty soon. And I don't think you're going to borrow all the money upfront. But this just sets you up, you, this is just a good idea.
Well, that's assuming we're not going to have to issue a bond or a request for a bond.
You can do certificates of obligation. You can borrow $10 million one year, $10 million the next year. You have a lot of flexibility here, but this really sets you up to be flexible.
But maybe, maybe I don't understand finance here, but if I've got money out, if I got a 2% note, and I've got $5 million here, if I put that $5 million in 5% money, I make 3% over six years.
But again.
So I'm having issues understanding, why do we pay off a 2% note right now? It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, next year, your payment for this note is $800,000.
Okay.
And next year, it's $790,000. Every year, you're going to need nearly a million dollars on this note. So that's why, if you take care of this now, you set yourself up not to have this burden in the future.
I guess you're saying that we don't necessarily have to make a decision until September, when the interest payments due. I'd really like to see an analysis with a value of money proposition that says you have this option, and this is what you'll make over time. make over time. Because just doing some analysis, it looks to me like we'd make $270,000 on top of paying all the interest, the 800 that you mentioned, 700,000, over the life of the, of the bond until 2029, is it? 2029?
I disagree.
So, well, that's why I'd like to see it on paper, with an analysis of what the possibilities are. And then we can make an informed decision on what the best thing to do is.
Okay, but again, you have to pay this year over $3 million. You have to do that. I don't, then you can, you need to figure whatever you're going to figure on what's remaining. But you have to pay. And there'll be more money going in this account, so it will be more than 3 million. I think it's 3.2 right now. But when you get to the point where you're at the end of September, you have to pay this. You have no choice.
And do you have, do you have, okay, so I need to, so I agree with Ms. Samuelson. We, we need to look at this, and I'm fine with, at the end of the day, if this is where we land. But you say we have to pay. Well, where's the statute? I need to look at the statute. I need to look at the, is it general accepted accounting principles for government?
Yes.
Okay, well, if you could send those to us and let us review that. Because if we have to pay, in this year, we still got months to get this done.
But the longer you draw this out, the less interest you get. And why would you do that? The only money that you can count on drawing interest on after this point in time is money that we have set, sitting aside to go into Fund 55, which we don't need, because there's a million dollars in there now. This is, I've talked to a couple of other auditors about this, and they would love to be sitting right here doing this. Longtime auditors.
Why are you so attached to this, pushing this right this minute? Why don't you?
To save $357,000. That's a lot of money.
So another month or two is going to cost us $357,000.
No, but why would you wait at all?
Because you're not listening to me. I've told you, 2% interest is what we're paying right now. We could put that money at 5% and make 3%. So I'm not, I'm having trouble understanding. And then you're telling us that we have to pay it. Well, show me the statutory...
I'm going to pay it, because we have to. So I will be paying what's in that bank, because I have to. I'm not going to jail, because I'm not following the law. This was a no-brainer, in my opinion. You pay off all your debt, you save this money, and you set yourself up for a building fund for the future. It made a lot of sense to me, and the other auditors I talked to said, man, we wish we could be where you are. So whatever you decide to do...
So you're sticking to your story. I get that. You've said it. I, I hear you.
From a financial standpoint, it doesn't make sense to pay off a loan that's 2.08% with money that could be making at minimum 3.75%.
Again, Annette, it's not...
She has to pay the 3 million.
You, it's not going to be 5 million that you're getting money on. It's 1.8% or less. And I don't know...
I, again, I'd like to see...
I don't understand how this is a problem.
I'd like to see the analysis on paper with the return or lack of return, what the options are, what the return would be. I mean, that's, that's what I would like, but I'm just one vote, so.
You're not trusting Becky Kidd here for saying that she has to pay it?
That's not the point. The point is, what, what are the other...
It's the point. She's saying that she has to pay it, or she's going to go to jail, and I don't want her...
I don't even believe that, so don't give me that.
Well, look, I think that, there's enough question here. Let's, let's pull this thing, this court, take a look at it, get everybody's questions answered, and, and make sure that we're doing the right thing going forward. Can we just table this for now and look at it for next court?
I think that's a great idea.
Who?
I mean, I understand.
I don't understand it at all. Why in the world, I've sent you the information, I sent everything that I could. I don't understand this. This was good for the county, and...
On Monday, 3/27 is the first time you sent the interest rate.
Dave, I've talked to you about this, and I have called you numerous times to go over it. And I haven't heard from you. I'm trying.
So you can get us a spreadsheet that shows us this time value of money discounted back?
I don't know what you're talking about, honestly. I don't know what you're talking about, about a time value of money.
I can help you with that.
I don't understand that verbiage. I'm an auditor, but I don't understand the time value of money. That's probably in the private sector. I work for the government.
Yes. I can help you, or I'm sure we have some financial consultants that work with LeAnn that can help with that. I mean, there's, there's resources that I just think we need to tap into. (laughing) I mean, if we don't have financial consultants that are helping us invest the millions of taxpayer dollars that we're investing, we need to.
Well, we do. We do.
Okay.
They're the ones who helped me manage this. The previous two auditors have said, lean on your financial advisors. They will help you.
Okay, let's sit down.
They think this is a great idea, especially moving forward, needing to borrow money for the future.
Well, let's...
Our financial advisors that we pay to do this have recommended this.
Let's sit down with them. Let's sit down with them. Okay, would you like to make...
You know, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry. This is, you know, a new twist on this thing, and I think I'd like to explore this a little. If we do pay 3.5 million or whatever at the end of this year, there's still that money that's left. Can we not throw that in some kind of a interest-bearing instrument of some sort and come out to the better with that portion, and then pay that off next year?
Whatever you guys decide to do.
I mean...
That will cost you about $70,000.
But we may make $150,000.
On, on what? On...
On money that's invested at 3.75%. That's what we need to see.
Where is that money? Because the money, the other money that I was going to use is budgeted in transfer to Fund 55. It's not invested. It's not invested at all. It's not in a position to be invested. That's what I'm trying to tell you. We're utilizing money that we're not moving into capital projects. I moved $1 million into capital projects. We're good through the remainder of this year. We still have enough money to move into capital projects that we could utilize here and pay this off. It's not invested. It's not planned to be invested at all. Does that make more sense?
Are we allowed to invest it?
Yes.
Well, I'm going to make a motion that we table this. I'm going to make a motion that we table this, and for further information and spreadsheets in writing, anyway, that's my motion.
I'll second that.
A motion made by Commissioner Eagle to table the resolution to pay off this debt as recommended by the county auditor, seconded by Commissioner Samuelson. Any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling the motion, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. So the ayes have it. This will be tabled, three to two.
Thank you.
Thank you.